Mm-hmm.
On behalf of the word. For instance, for like the latest. I thought it was.
Please just sit in by the United States of America. And to the Republic for which is stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All the moment.
Counselor Sarnoski?
Here.
Counselor Smalley is excused. Counselor Hamilton?
Here.
Counselor Whitaker?
Here.
Counselor Woods?
Here.
Counselor Degel?
Present.
And Mayor Sumner is excused as well.
Introduction of meeting. Do we have any media here?
Okay.
Wait, wait.
Listen.
Yeah, we can't have him repeat.
Scott Carroll with the news review.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody wishing to speak for the city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign-in table at the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during your meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees, if you're joining us tonight via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entering. You need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. Other comments will only be taken if prior notification was given to the city recorder. Public comment, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items on the link. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. The time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come to the microphone. Public comment is a time for the council to hear about the thoughts or concerns of the community. It's not a time for dialogue or back and forth with the city council or the city staff. Other than asking possible clarifying questions, neither the council nor staff will typically reply to specific comments or questions raised by the members of the public. To this extent, a response is necessary. To the extent that a response is necessary, the council will have city staff do their best to do so before the next meeting. Although such timeframes are not always possible to be met. The council appreciates the time taken by the public to provide comments and desires to hear your thoughts and concerns. However, to be able to run our meeting efficiently and to protect the rights of all involved, the city needs to utilize this time as a period of receiving rather than providing information. Thank you for your understanding. I'd like to call our Chief Mills to the podium for a presentation.
Same.
Oh, perfect thing.
I know.
I was really satisfied.
It was good time, please.
So you know, it's not getting any better. Council President, Council, Chief Mills, Southern Police. I just wanted to take a moment before the meeting to make a presentation of a city employee and give them the much deserved recognition for the service of this community. For those of you who may not know, Andrew Johnson is our city's municipal judge. He has been serving the city of Sutherland since September first of nineteen ninety-five. And this year marks his thirtieth years, thirtieth year of dedicated service. Over those three decades, Judge Johnson has presided over court and has seen an estimated fifty-six thousand individuals come before him as judge here in Sutherland. Judge Johnson exemplifies the highest standard of impartiality, wisdom, and integrity. Having personally worked with him for the last twenty-two years as an officer with the Sutherland Police Department, I have seen firsthand his unwavering commitment to fair and impartial justice. Regardless of the case, he has always strived to do what is right.
We would like to thank. We would like to thank Andrew Johnson Johnson for his dedication to the city Sutherland Municipal Court for the last thirty years. His dedication to the court has led to around twelve hundred court dates, other than the one that he decided to go to Arizona and cook coffee and forgot to tell us. He is known in the criminal world for being a great attorney judge, but more so for his fancy colored alligator shoes. He is compassionate with the defendants that come into his courtroom and want to take charge of changing their lives. But most importantly is the kindness that he shows when he thinks no one is watching. We see you, sir. Stop. So thank you for sticking around for the last thirty years, and out of the kindness of our hearts, we hope that is not another thirty years. So go enjoy golfing without having to tell us.
Judge Johnson, can you come up here, please?
Yes. Thank you.
So Judge Johnson, on behalf of the city of Sutherland, all the officers and the staff of the Sutherland Police Department, it is truly an honor to recognize you and to present you with a thirty-year service pin and a thirty-year service plaque. Judge Johnson, it has been a privilege working alongside of you, and we thank you for your decades of service to our community and our continued relationship going forward. Congratulations.
The city, we have a. Oh, my.
The microphone.
It says Judge Andrew Johnson in appreciation of your thirty years of dedicated service.
Well, thank you very much.
Wow. Can it's here also.
Thank you.
We want.
I remember the first time I sat on that bench thirty years ago, and it doesn't seem like it's been thirty years ago. It seems like yesterday. So I want to thank all of you. As I've always said, I serve at the will of the council. And I've worked with some great people, court clerks, police department, city councilors. It's been my true honor and privilege to serve the city of Sutherland for thirty years, and thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
And I have one more impromptu, so. Since I'm already standing here and we're giving years of service pins, one of my officers hit year one, so that was your thirty. This is your one. Come on up. He wasn't expecting this, but since he's here, caught him. Officer Woods, here's your one-year pin.
Thanks, sir.
She's there, welcome.
I'm done now. I don't have any more awards.
Mike's gonna want this. Oh, you want to speak then?
Thank you.
Pull up your pin.
Well, I just want to add to that. The one that gave him the, I couldn't see what it was, but that is Trissy Penland, and she's been his court clerk for what, Tris, how long?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen.
Wow.
I started with Andrew when he first started, and I got the pleasure of working with him for twenty years.
Yep. It was great, Dad.
And I gotta say one thing that I, in fact, they brought it up first back there tonight that I will never forget is I helped in court, obviously, and we, at Christmas, we always do, let him do like Christmas songs sometimes for part of their fee or whatever. And always they'd like talk it, read it. They wouldn't be singing, and I said, you're not singing. So he said, get up there and help him, Dad. So I had to do that more than one time. It was a pleasure to work with you, and congratulations.
Thanks, Dad. It was my pleasure.
Larry, you can skip over to seven.
Sure.
You can skip to consent agenda. You already read that part.
The public comment.
On topic, wait.
Consider agenda for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five times the meeting. Here we have a motion. Our written motions.
Oh, you do have an on-topic comment.
Need to go to public comment.
The public comment that you have up there, the yellow sheet. You read it off, but you do have somebody that was. It's the public comment part that you read first.
Right, but we didn't ask. He didn't.
Yeah.
Yep. Number four.
You read it off, but he, it's on topic.
It's.
He read on the public comment.
Yeah, but he needs. Now we need.
That one is on topic, so.
We need to hear from.
He needs to.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
So you're ready to listen?
No, we're ready to hear the public comments.
Okay.
So you can call him up.
We have a public comment from Tom Hammer Schmidt.
Don't know if this is the right time or not. Maybe I should defer. I'd like to hear this, the second reading of what you're gonna talk about, but I have, I'm not sure. I'm Tom Hammer Schmidt, seven twenty-nine South Comstock. I'm not too sure about this sidewalk ordinance that you're going to change, but I wanted to know, is this going to affect the citizens that are, their property joins the sidewalk? Can I ask questions?
Go ahead and answer that.
If your property adjoins a sidewalk, you're responsible for that piece of sidewalk. And so this is just codifying that in our city code. It's that way everywhere, and it has been that way here, but they're just kind of cleaning up and making it more ironclad.
And there's a word in there indemnification. What are you meaning by that?
Can we have our city attorney Chad Jacobs respond to that? He did a good job of explaining that last month. Unless you'd like to wait until after his three minutes are done, Chad, or, but it seems like it's more about questions.
It's, it's up to the council president as the presiding officer, if he wants me to respond now, or just wait till public comment's done, and then I'm happy to respond.
Okay, so are there any more comments?
Well, yes, I had some more comments here about that. If the, if the owner is going to be required for maintenance, does that mean if a sidewalk needs repaired, it's on us?
Yes.
Okay. If you are going to do this, I think that there should be an inspection of all the sidewalks, and the city should take care of them from before this starts. I don't think it's right because sidewalks that have needed repaired or not repaired. So I feel the city should take it upon themselves to take and repair those. And what about, does that mean like we paint, if there's a hydrant in front of our place, we have to paint that yellow and whatever else?
No, sir.
How do we know that? Is that in your ordinance?
Let's go ahead and just finish your comments. You have nine seconds.
Okay. What about signage? Is it legal for skateboarders and bicyclists to use the sidewalks? I'm thinking about liability down the road.
Good point.
And the other thing is people parking on sidewalks of South Comstock in front of the Rendles duplexes and so forth. They don't have all the parking they need evidently, so they park on a sidewalk. I've seen that lots of times.
Okay, Tom. Your time's up.
Alright.
Thank you. Chad, would you like to respond?
Sure. So Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office, council president and members of the council. As we talked about last meeting, it's always been in the code, and it's always been this way through the common law, which is created by the courts, that the abutting property owners are responsible for maintaining and responsible for liability for sidewalks that are abutting their property. So previously, if you look at the ordinance that's being presented to you tonight for a second reading, it previously talked about the idea that the expense of maintaining a sidewalk and good repair shall be borne by the abutting property owners. In doing a review of our code, the city's insurance company, City and County Insurance Services, recommended that we update this language to more modern language to make it more clear and more explicit. And so that's all this is really doing is a housekeeping matter and sort of updating the language. It's not really changing any duties or responsibilities. It's not starting something new. It's something that's been in place, you know, for a long, long time in Sutherland, and as was mentioned by staff, it's been in place, you know, in cities and counties all across the country and in Oregon. What the updated language does, it just makes it more expressive, more clear about duties and responsibilities and liability instead of leaving some of that sort of to interpretation. It's just making it very clear so property owners actually fully understand what their responsibilities are instead of leaving them in the dark about that. So part of this is really to provide notice to the public about sort of what the responsibilities are. And then finally, the indemnification, what that basically means is that since they're responsible and they're liable for damages that happen, but if someone turns around and sues the city, that the property owners on notice that they in fact have to defend their own actions instead of the city defending their actions. So that's what the indemnification language means. So again, this is really just updating the language to make it more modern and more clear for the regulated community and the abutting property owners. It's not really changing any roles or responsibilities or doing anything new.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Now we'll do the consent, consent agenda for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Let's have a motion again.
I'll make a motion to be approved, consent agenda presented.
And move in second is that we approve the consent agenda for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Sarnoski?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton? Counselor Whitaker?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counselor David?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Council Business Ordinance eleven oh five sidewalk maintenance amendment second reading. City reporter.
An ordinance of the city of Sutherland, Oregon, amending chapter one two point two zero, clarifying language related to sidewalk maintenance and repair and adding indemnification provisions.
Staff report.
Tammy Troubridge, Finance Director, counselors, had nothing to add, but what the city attorney did a great job of unpacking that. Basically, this was brought up during our insurance best practice review, and we're updating language. It's a housekeeping item.
We're gonna suggest that we explain it again. Obviously, just did that, but did you, does that answer all your questions?
Here, hold on. Let me make a motion so we can discuss it first. Let me make a motion to approve ordinance eleven oh five sidewalk maintenance amendment as presented.
We have a second. Okay, second by the staff.
Okay. Did the city, before all of this, was the city taking care of them? All right, with the old ordinance, was the city taking care of maintenance, repair of the sidewalks?
No, not in front of residences. We have occasionally, we do, if we do a pavement project and it triggers ADA corners, we do those. We take care of those. Painting in front of hydrants, we do signage, we do. If someone's parking on the sidewalk, you can let somebody know, the cops know, so that they can cite that person if no one should park on a sidewalk.
There's a number for COVID enforcement for people parking on sidewalks where they shouldn't be.
Well, I thought there was, but it happens. So so basically, we have been responsible for, if we needed new concrete down, something happened, it was our responsibility. Okay? I have no further questions.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I know, we don't normally do this, but I thought it was kind of important for this one because I know there was some misunderstanding about this. But I think it's good for us to take the time to explain these things when we have a question like he had. Anyway, that's my comment about that. Okay.
I have a comment. All the years that I worked here, I thought it was just businesses that were responsible for that. And like Troy told me, they were given two feet so they could put their signs and stuff out, but the rest was the city's doing. So I should have asked this last week, but I just had it in my head that it was just businesses.
So the modern sidewalks, the ones that we're allowing to be put in now, have to be six feet wide. But it has to be, there has to be four feet of unobstructed to meet ADA. So they could put a mailbox in the sidewalk so mail can be delivered, or there might be a power pole here or there that obstructs part of it, but there has to be four foot of unobstructed sidewalk. So that might be where he's getting his two, the two feet versus the.
Well, I just don't ever remember the homeowner being responsible for the sidewalks.
Well, then, if I'm, am I, I don't know if I'm correct, you can, when someone, when there's a building, when people put in homes, they're responsible for putting in sidewalks for those homes, correct?
Yeah, so if there's, if there is unimproved street, then we may have them do a waiver of remonstrance or a covenant to participate in future building of the streets just to identify. So if the road hasn't been surveyed, then we can get the sidewalk in the right location. Now, if it's somebody that's improving in a subdivision that has sidewalks, they are responsible to put the sidewalk in if it has not already been installed.
So people that have lived there for like thirty years, they've known this because I've
it's. Always been that way, that it's the responsibility of the property owner.
Even though the builder is the one that usually puts the sidewalk in. Does he convey that to us?
Part of this, part of this knowledge of, the struggle could be is that a lot of our streets are unimproved, so all of our, you know, second, third, fourth, those are all unimproved, majority of them, and so we don't have a lot of the sidewalks that need that maintenance by the property owners. And so as we do develop those subdivisions, they are required, and the contractor typically puts those in at the time of building houses. If it's thirty years and a tree trunk has grown under the sidewalk, then that typically is handled through the repair of, whether it's a house taking down the tree. Or if somebody's doing a locate, they remove a panel, they reinstall the panel.
Is there, is there verbiage that as we start to develop more of these communities where there aren't the sidewalks, then there's the language that lets the future homeowners know that there, there's that responsibility as they purchase those homes?
A lot of them are in those CCNRs that are with the subdivisions that when they sign that they buy their house, it is included with the deeds of their property. Now, how much of them they read, I don't know.
So that's this work when we do improvements like Valentine and Comstock, when we put those sidewalks in.
So that's what Aaron's referring to, that trigger those ADA requirements, and so then we, or if we're doing a full street build.
Well, I'm just curious, the homeowners on those streets, are they aware that they're responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk in front?
And I don't know that answer.
Yeah, because I would be willing to bet that most of them are not aware that that's, I know they're responsible.
Well, we're getting that out there.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize this either, so this is all new to me.
Council President, I may be able to provide a little bit more information that may or may not be helpful, maybe too far in the weeds, I don't know. But the way cities typically acquire right-of-way such as streets is through dedication. We don't take the property and fee simple like you own your property for your house. We're not a complete owner of it. Technically, the property owners own the right-of-way up to the middle of the road. And so their ownership of the property extends to the middle of the road. We've just been dedicated the right-of-way, so we as the city have control over that portion of their property that has been dedicated as right-of-way. So if in the future, if we ever decide we don't need that road anymore and we vacate the street, what happens through that street vacation process is the property reverts back to the abutting property owners on each side of the property. So technically, if you look in the county recorder's office and look at the map of their property line, it really extends for most properties all the way out to the center of the right-of-way. So technically, all they're doing is they're being responsible for maintaining their property, even though it's in, within the city's right-of-way. And so that's where things get really kind of confusing, and like I said, it's a little bit in the weeds here. But that's historically why property owners have been responsible for the sidewalks, even though they may not construct them, developer may construct them. It's still technically on their property, even though they've ceded control over that property to the city or the county or whomever, whoever is in charge of the right-of-way. Again, not sure if that was helpful, but you know, just a little more background and information to sort of, you know, help people understand where this is all coming from.
Yeah, so I, so Chad, if, if we choose to vote no, it really doesn't make any difference, right? Because it's only the language that is being cleaned up?
Right. The language that's in the code and the common law that where the courts have said that you're still liable if you don't maintain the sidewalks and for your property, that's still gonna exist. That's not gonna go away, no matter what you do tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussions? Let's vote.
Counselor Sarnoski?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counselor Degel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution twenty twenty-five point one two, a fire department surplus, fire chief.
Counsel, excuse me, council president, city council, Michaeline Fire Chief. With the acquisition of the new-to-us ladder truck in May, which is currently in service, is looking great. We have no need for the broken-down nineteen ninety-two Pierce Telesquirt. Ladders full of cracks and whatnot, and that's why we really bought the, the new one to us. So I'm just asking you here to declare it surplus.
Any discussion?
Uh, motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five point one two, fire department surplus property as presented.
Well, second. And move in second, and that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five point one two. All those in favor? Nope, sorry.
Discussion.
Call for a vote.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Now you can discuss it. You can have a session.
Discussion.
How are you gonna postpone for this?
It was too late for us to put it in the local auction down here at Didi. But if you surplus it tonight, we can get it in what's called J and C auctions in Medford. And they actually charge a little bit less of a fee for us to do that, so we'll just drive it down to Medford soon as we can get Tammy to sign off on the title, and we'll take it to Medford to the auction.
Okay, any further discussion? Vote.
Counselor Sarnoski?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counselor Degel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Considerate, consideration of a new city manager. Staff report, please.
Council President, members of the city council. Jerry Gillum, our current city manager, is due to retire at the end of the year. As a result, the city has been engaged in the process of hiring a new city manager. The city council has advertised the position, adopted a description, provided opportunities for the public comment during general public comment periods at its meetings and interviewed candidates. If the council has reached a general consensus on a preferred candidate to move forward, I respectfully outline the next steps for council consideration. So step one would be the confirmation of job description. The council must reaffirm the job description previously adopted to ensure it reflects the expectations and responsibilities of the position being offered. Selection of candidates, the council should formally select the candidate to whom the position will be offered based on consensus and qualifications. And then lastly, delegation of contract negotiation authority. The council is asked to delegate authority to the mayor to negotiate the employment contract with select candidate, with the selected candidate. This delegation will allow for efficient and confidential negotiations with the option for the mayor to consult staff or the city attorney as needed. Once negotiations are complete, the finalized contract will be presented. presented to the council for formal approval at the October meeting. Again, if you have decided on a preferred candidate, a suggested motion could be uh, to move to offer the position of city, Sutherland City Manager to whoever the top candidate's name is, based on the job description and the staff report and to delegate to the mayor to negotiate with assistance of the staff and city attorney as needing, needed. If you have not decided on a preferred candidate, do not make a suggestion motion and please provide staff with the preferred next steps to move forward in the process. Thank you.
Okay. So we need a motion to offer the position of city manager to Kurt Sorensen based on the job description and staff report and to delegate authority to the mayor to negotiate with the assistance of staff and the city attorney as needed.
Somebody needs to make that motion.
Yes.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to offer the position of Southern City Manager to Kurt Sorensen based on the job description and the staff report and delegate authority to the mayor to negotiate with assistance of staff and city attorney as needed.
Also seconded.
It's been moved in seconded that we offer the position of Southern City Manager to Kurt Sorensen. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor David.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Financial hardship guidance ordinance eleven hundred staff report.
Mayor is not here, but Council President and counselors, Tammy Trobridge, Finance Director. And in ordinance eleven hundred in section three point one eight point oh seven zero, it refers to an application and process for financial hardship qualification that could um, exempt someone from paying the public safety fee. And so as part of implementing the public safety fee, uh, we were determining what that would be. And so the city manager is authorized to determine hardship on a case by case basis under established guidelines, which must be approved by the city council. Finance Department has researched other programs which provide financialist aid for customers and the qualifying standards appear to be an annual income at or below sixty percent of the state median income. These programs include the Oregon Housing and Community Services, LIHE program, Ucan, Avista, and Pacific Power LID program. Staff is recommending that council adopt the same guidelines and qualifying documentation as required for these programs. And you will see that there is a guideline sheet and an application attached to this. And your options are to approve the attached application and guidelines for financial hardship qualification per section three point one eight point oh seven oh of ordinance eleven hundred, or not to approve the application and guidelines, or to modify and approve it with changes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial hardship guidance for ordinance eleven hundred as presented. Well, seconded.
We've been seconded that we approve the attach or the financial hardship qualification. Any discussion?
This, this is a point of business.
It doesn't. No, it would be individuals.
Any more discussion? Vote.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor David.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution twenty twenty five point one three establishing a financial hardship fee.
Again, counselors, um, we're talking about a resolution twenty twenty five point one three, which is establishing a filing fee for a financial hardship waiver, which might seem a little bit counterintuitive, but it is refundable. And in section C of three point one eight point oh seven oh of the ordinance, it talks about there will be an initial filing fee which the council shall set by resolution for any appeal made under this section. These fees are fully refundable should the appellant adequately justify and secure the requested change or relief based on financial necessity. So we're setting a nominal fee basically to help us process the paperwork and the time taken. And that fee would be fully refundable if they meet the guidelines of the criteria that you just adopted. And so your options are to approve resolution twenty twenty five point one three to establish this initial filing fee for the financial hardship waiver application, or not to approve this resolution, or to approve it with changes.
Have we established a fee yet?
That is what this is doing.
Okay.
Oh.
You don't have a, like, an actual fee set yet.
I'm just supposing that you do a twenty five dollar one right here.
That was special.
So that kind of detours everybody from filing because if they really don't qualify, they won't get their twenty five dollars.
Exactly. Want to make a motion first?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five point one three establishing a filing fee for financial hardship as presented.
We've been seconded that we establish a financial hardship fee. Any discussion?
I think that's done.
Seems, uh, I, I guess I won't anticipate a lot of people applying for this, but one thing you're, they're gonna know about it, because we have no way of telling people what's going on. I've added our new website, I guess.
Our new website, we're planning on trying to get those kind of, that kind of information out there, new information, changes like this, things that apply to the public safety fee that is in the public interest right now.
And our media that's online tonight will probably hear it and say something about it in the newspaper. And it'll be in our newsletter also. So there are places that they take the time to look. I know, I tell you, we'll see it.
I just have.
It'll probably be in the water bill too.
I think we could. Absolutely.
Yeah, City Hall.
Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods. Counselor David. Motion carries.
Report.
Uh, Council President and counselors, uh, Bo Hart, City Recorder again. Uh, the two thousand twenty five League of Oregon Cities Conference is being held on October second through the fourth. Uh, the LLC is requesting that we have a delegate to represent the city of Sutherland with the purpose of being able to vote on the LLC's Board of Directors. Uh, in the past, it appears that it's been a member of council or city manager. Uh, attendees that fit that criteria are um, Counselor President Whitaker, Counselor Sarnoski, and City Manager Jerry Gillum. The LLC is requesting that we have a delegate submitted via their online form. Um, and then this is just for their Board of Directors vote that happens at that meeting. Um, so staff is suggesting a motion and a second to appoint a delegate to represent the city of Sutherland at the two thousand twenty five LLC ball conference if you felt inclined to do so.
Vote's on Saturday, though, isn't it?
It is on, on the Saturday, yeah. Of, so on the fourth, I believe it is. Yeah.
Are you planning on staying until Saturday?
Motion.
We need a motion.
If, if you're wanting to, uh, point a delegate, yeah.
Well. What if we don't want to appoint any delegates?
So you have to have one. We always have.
You could appoint Jerry since he's not here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's have a.
Or the new one.
Is, is Mary, is Mayor going? She's not going, is she?
Just the, just the three that I mentioned, Mary.
I don't think he'll do that.
No, but I mean, you could still go as captain and go to the city and your stuff since he'll go to the dome.
Okay, may I take a motion to, uh, up uh, elect, appoint, whatever, uh,
Point at L again.
Go to LLC conference.
I'll second it.
We've been seconded that we appoint someone.
Were you moving, were you making?
Were you making the motion?
Mm-hmm. He did.
Was I making this?
Yeah.
He did the second.
He did the second, but we didn't know.
He made the motion.
Okay.
I mean, I, I hadn't planned on staying till Saturday, but if somebody has to do it, I can stay and do it, I guess.
Okay. Uh, so any discussion? That was the discussion.
Well, are you two planning on staying?
I was not planning on staying on Saturday. I was, I think they were better.
I'm not going. I'm not signed up. I've been, I've been to a lot of them.
Only Adam and myself and Jerry were the ones that were going. Okay, um, let's let's, uh, let's have a motion to appoint uh, Adam Sarnoski as a delegate to vote at the LLC conference.
Well, you got stuck with that, yeah.
I don't want to be fair.
Yeah, I did. I'll stay and pass. I'll do it.
Who's making the motion?
You sound like you just did. I'll make a motion to appoint Adam Sarnoski as the leading Oregon City's delegate.
Now, seconded that.
We've been seconded that Adam has been elected to represent us at LLC. Any discussion? All those in favor? No, sorry.
Uh, Counselor Sarnoski.
Fortunately, yes.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor David.
No.
Motion carries.
Here's your friend.
Okay, public comment, purpose of public comments to allow citizens.
Is there, is there any kind of?
Uh, council comments. Council comments, uh.
I don't know. Jerry is having some.
That was the voting.
Counselor Sarnoski.
I just wanted to say I'm glad we're promoting somebody from within the city. I'd like to see somebody that's familiar with the city actually staying with the city and having an interest in sticking with it, moving on and trying hard to make it a better place. That's it.
Okay.
I have to agree with Adam. Um, he far outshined the other applicants that we had and um, he knows the town, he knows the people, he could be great. Now, I want to thank the Lions, the flags on, uh, that we just had.
Labor Day.
Yeah. Anyway, they were clear way down this time. I thought that was cool. I took a picture. So, anyway, thank you, Lions.
Counselor Woods.
Yeah.
Counselor David.
No.
Yeah, Counsel Whitaker's already said enough, so I can drop that. Okay, so now, time for public comment. Purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off agenda. Time limited, three minutes per citizen shall apply. Anybody who want to make a public comment?
No.
Okay. Ladies, Jerry.